Eyes and please join me in the pledge. I'll note again that we are hosting this meeting tonight or holding this meeting remote and in person pursuant to the governor's executive order. So we do have trustee Spurling.
Can't hear you.
Online. Can you hear me now?
No, I don't think she can hear.
I can't hear anybody.
Can you hear me now?
Guess not.
Hello?
Teresa?
So what changed in the last 10 minutes?
We just cut you off. Turn your video off.
Jeff's muted.
Charlene raised her hand.
Yeah, there you go, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, you can hear us?
I can, thank you.
No worries. So we are hosting this meeting virtually and in person. Trustee Spurling is remote. We also do have a few other members, members of the press online as well. I'll roll right into the public comment period. Because we're in this quasi-in-person state, folks had three different ways to contact the village to be added to this meeting either by emailing Jeff that they want to be on the Zoom, joining the Zoom, or coming here in person. Anything?
We did not receive anything.
All right. Is there anybody on the Zoom hearing that would like to make public comment? All right, is there anybody in the room here that would like to make public comment tonight? All right, thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on. Item number five is the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of March 8th, accounts payable through March 18th, and ordinance 1910.
So move.
Any discussion? Denny would like to make a comment.
Okay. In that amounts of accounts payable on the consent, $980,000, we did, I noticed two figures. One was for $70,000 to the Yorkville School District, and also one for $370,000 to the Yorkville School District. And that's because of where we're building our houses now. And we're still, we're still doing it, but I don't know if other towns are, but that should help both schools as far as our money goes with new houses coming in.
Certainly. Okay. All right, if there's no other discussion, there's been a motion and a second.
Second.
There already has been. We already did that. There has been. Any further discussion? We'll call the roll.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
MacCarries, 6-0, thank you. 5-0.
President Brawley, did you want me to call roll for the meeting itself?
For this meeting?
Yeah, we should do that, shouldn't we?
Okay.
I skipped right over that, so.
Yes.
Laura, do we need to re-vote on this last thing then, or no? Perfect. Let's open the meeting. Go ahead.
Okay. Trustee Guyer?
Here.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Here.
Trustee Marisak?
Here.
And trustee Betzinger.
All right, anything else I skipped at the beginning of the meeting that we should do normally? Thank you. All right, I'll move on to items for separate action this evening. Item A is ordinance 1909, adopting the operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal year 2022. This is second reading. Justin, did you have anything else to add, any changes or corrections since the last time we've seen it?
There were just a few minor changes. We had presented the board with insurance decrease of 4%. The actual insurance decrease was 7.5%. Other than that, there's a few minor equipment items that got moved from fiscal year 22 to fiscal year 21. Other than that, there's not really any changes.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Of staff on this item? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Anything else, any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
MacCarries, 5-0, thank you. And I assume, Justin, you will post the full budget on the village website now that it's approved?
Yeah.
Somewhere? Perfect. All right, item B this evening, a word of a contract for village-wide leak survey to Emmy Simpson in the amount of $24,750. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So on March 3rd of this year, staff placed an RFP out for leak detection services for the Village of Montgomery. This incorporates all of the Montgomery Water Distribution System, including an incorporated Boulder Hill. This is an annual survey that the village conducts each year. This survey is very important as it helps reduce our water loss throughout the distribution system of non-revenue'd water. This year, there were three, a total of 11 bid packets, I believe, that were picked up, three total bid packets received, and of those three received, there was one qualifying bidder, which is Emmy Simpson Company, in the amount of $24,750. This item is slightly over budget due to the time period in which we bid this work out. We will have to make adjustments going to the next fiscal year for those increases. But nevertheless, the importance of this survey, in our opinion, outweighs the slight increase over the budgeted amount. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time, otherwise we're asking for approval for Emmy Simpson Company in the amount of $24,750.
What's the lowest bid? Why did, why did you not take that? You didn't qualify for everything, or?
So the, as part of the RFP, one of the qualifications that we have is that the company must have a office within 60 miles. Number one, there are companies that do this throughout the country, and so we want people that are familiar with, you know, our region, soil types, different types of situations. You get, you know, multiple different reasons, but also the ability to provide emergency leak detection throughout the process in which they're doing the survey.
Where are they located at? Because they've done business with us before.
Correct.
Where are they located?
I would have to get their exact address, but they do reside within, or have an office within the 60-mile radius.
I can get that. I think trustee Lee is asking consulting engineering, the one that was the lowest. Where are they located, correct? You're asking where they're located?
Yeah, the 17.
Right.
I think it was Ohio. I'll have to look it up again.
Okay. You can get back to us.
All right, any other questions for Mark?
I have a question. So we do this annually. Is there any projections over time how much this actually saves us in water loss at the end?
So, so I actually had sent out a summary sheet, I believe it was about a month ago, from our previous. All right, I'm sorry, I take that back. This would have been last year. So at the end of the survey, there's a full summary of all the detects that were found, estimated water loss, which then is calculated with our our water rate, and it generates out and tells basically, again, estimated, but to the best of our knowledge or the best of their knowledge through the process of how long these leaks have been gone undetected, and then there's a full, full summary of, of the amount saved, which, again, I'd have to pull up what last year's was, but I know it was, essentially it paid for itself in, in what we, what we saved.
Do you strategically do this after the winter? Because I'm sure we got a bunch, I mean, as we're struggling with Boulder Hill.
Correct.
I'm sure there's a bunch of breaks that you're trying to find now.
And that was kind of a perfect example of why we try to pick this time of year. We try to do that kind of end of winter as late into the budget year that we can. But also typically, in this, in this instance, we waited a little bit longer. So we're going to try to complete our hydrant flushing, and then we'll bring in the contractor immediately after, which is really almost more beneficial for us because we do have hydrants that have issues that go undetected after we do flushing. So it is strategic, and we do try to do it this year, or this time of the year every year.
All right.
We just had 10 breaks in Boulder Hill, didn't we?
They weren't in Boulder Hill. The breaks that we had, there were several that were in Boulder Hill, but we had a majority of them along the River Street corridor from essentially Taylor Street down to Ash Lawn. So we are pretty highly concentrated breaks in that area, which this survey is a perfect example of why it's important because of that situation, because, because of the bedrock and the soil materials in that corridor, those leaks don't surface. So they essentially run underground, the water is absorbed into the, into the soil, and they go undetected. So it doesn't become apparent to us until we start looking at the trends for pumpage data, until we can identify it. So again, the faster that we can identify that we're losing non-revenue'd water, the better it is for us.
And long-term, that's a large benefit, right? Because it helps cut down on our daily rates and usages?
Okay.
Yeah, and if we, if we choose to go to Lake Michigan, it's going to be.
Very expensive.
It is, to all the water we lose, so.
Correct.
All right, anything else?
So move.
Trustee Guyer?
Yeah.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Carries 5-0, thank you. All right, moving on to items for discussion this evening, we have the regional water supply discussion. Mr. Freeman? I joke, but it's a pleasure to see you. I was making a comment to Youngerman between meetings that this is honestly probably the single most important decision that this board will make for the next 50 years, is the, our water supply moving forward. So I take it very seriously, even though I'm a little lighthearted on it, but it is something that we have been focusing on here, also with Oswego and Yorkville, and then also with Joliet, and in, you know, conversations with DuPage Water Commission. I mean, it is, it's probably the issue that takes up more of my time than anything else in Montgomery. So I'm excited to have you here. I'm excited for the update, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much, President Brawley and trustees. Appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I need to get out of presentation mode and share the screen.
At some point, I'm no longer going to be a village board member, and I'm always going to remember our water conversations and pavement condition index. Those are the two things that I'm going to remember for the rest of my life.
Having trouble figuring this.
They may be the two things you remember.
Yeah, I need to share.
Screen though, so Teresa can't see it.
Escape. Won't let me escape.
He just minimized the screen.
Share screen. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Chair. And we're going to bring this back up. Okay, there we go. Ready. All right, so tonight's presentation's intent is to give you a broad overview. If you do not recall, I was here in October, so somewhat similar in that sense, but actually maybe a little more focused. And the idea is to set things up. You have six alternatives, it would seem, at this point. Wanted to share those with you and then get feedback if, you know, you see them all as viable alternatives, because if there's agreement with that at the next village board meeting, the intent is to bring you a contract so that you can evaluate each of those alternatives together on an apples-to-apples basis, and then work, work through that process throughout the summer, going into the fall. And then if there's sufficient information to your liking, then you can make a decision on which path that you want to go. So tonight, being generally focused, general overview, only, only have 20 to 25 minutes of presentation. I do ask to bank a little bit of time when I come back in October, because that one might be a little bit longer overall. We got a thumbs up on that? All right. The overall agenda, first, just going to quickly hit the water source sustainability. It's something you guys have heard for years, going back to actually 2015, 16, but just to start with that foundation, so everybody's on the same page. Then we're going to talk about a couple of the historical and ongoing studies that have been completed as part of this, which we'll be building on. And then with the new information being, adding that to the equation. We'll then go through the six alternatives that have basically lined up for your consideration here. And then, you know, suggest some of the considerations for you. Certainly cost would be one of them, but there are many other components that can go into this. And you probably have others that won't even be listed, but it would be good to start thinking about that as time goes on throughout this year. Talk about the overall schedule then for this study, and certainly any Q and A. And this is fairly informal, so if you want to stop in the middle, you know, please feel free to do so, and we can address comments and questions as we go.
Few items.
Am I supposed to be seeing something yet? Because it just, all it says is Village of Montgomery has started screen sharing. I don't see a PowerPoint yet.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. So, oh, you know what? On my screen, I can't see anything. Isn't that weird? It's like a different view.
Can you pan all the way over to see that? Is it two monitors?
That's a good question. Oh, yeah, look at that. Okay.
Thank you.
It was good. All right, trustee Spurling.
Yay!
Okay, good.
I'm good, thank you.
Great. Thank you for letting us know that. Okay, water sustainability, and as you may recall, you have a number of deep wells within the community, and there's been a ton of work evaluating the sustainability of those wells. The upper graph or exhibit here on this slide is identifying what the regional sandstone model projects for the areas where there's a risk of declining well performance, which is in the light orange. The stars running down would be Montgomery in blue, Oswego in gray, and Yorkville in red, or at least about the center of each of those communities on the Fox River. So as we sit today, the risk of declining well performance, meaning that water levels are getting to the point where well performance will start to degrade, and the production from wells within that area could, could start to decline. You can see that a lot of that is down in the Joliet area and kind of emanating from there. The line with the hashes through it is the Sandwich Fault, and I think, if you recall, we've talked about that a lot in the past as well, which limits the amount of water that can get into this region from the west and southwest. Moving forward to 2029, that year is for a reason. The city of Joliet is planning to switch to an alternative water source, specifically Lake Michigan water through the city of Chicago, in 2030. So playing this out in time, the Illinois State Water Survey has estimated the risk of declining well performance to be much larger, leading into that, and points down in the Joliet area where actually some of the wells could become inoperable, meaning the water levels go down so far that the wells are no longer able to produce water, and unfortunately, in the Joliet area, they may not be able to meet their maximum day demand. You may be asking yourself, once Joliet goes off of the aquifer and some of the communities in the area does, does that solve all the problems? Relative to the aquifer, and unfortunately, the answer is it does not. The withdrawals from the aquifer in all of northeast Illinois are above the sustainable yield of that aquifer, and specifically down in the southeast Kane, northeast Kendall, and the northwest Will County, the sustainable yield is quite low and well below any of the amount of withdrawals. So many communities would need to switch off to be able to get to a level where those water levels would start to stabilize.
I have a quick question.
Certainly.
On the Sandwich Fault zone, everything to the northeast of that, as far as that water level, that it's a, because water can't really pass over that fault zone, is everything northeast of that higher?
It's actually low.
Little ledge, or is it just a, a space where it can't navigate over?
So imagine the layers and layers of bedrock that eventually get down to the formations that you're pulling from, which is 700 feet, and then the next aquifer down is 1,000. West and south of the fault, those bedrock is actually higher, so it's higher, and you're lower. And you're right, the water has much difficulty. They're actually trying to study specifically the fault, but they've shown through this historical analysis that there's very, very limited amount of water that can pass from west to east, which, again, the water levels would be higher on that side. So without that recharge coming from that direction, it's just limited to the amount of water that can get down from the north. And it's a pretty dense sandstone, so there's just, it can't get enough water to it.
It limits flow both from the southwest to the northeast, but also it limits flow in both directions then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So 2030, some changes that are predicted in the model going off of the aquifer. That's how things look. Again, a little bit of improvement, but ultimately still a lot of risk of declining well performance. And then if we move forward to 2035, and if your three communities, meaning Montgomery, Oswego, and Yorkville, were to continue on the aquifer, you start seeing areas where there could be risk of well inoperability for your wells as well. Now, I will say that this modeling was done as part of a larger modeling effort. The Oswego study, which we're going to talk about quite a bit, has commissioned the Illinois State Water Survey to look specifically at your three communities and your three wells, or your, the wells within your community. So when we come back in the fall, we'll have more specific information to you. Your specific wells, identifying general timeframes for where you're at. Again, this is just to show you overall that likely the results of that modeling will show that there's challenges out into the future. Okay, other sources of water within the study area, or, you know, that could be available to the Village of Montgomery. The Fox River is an obvious case, and we talked a lot about this in the past as well, that the Illinois State Water Survey has modeled the Fox River to determine, you know, what the base flow is now, and then do projections into the future. The future projections for the Fox River are that actually water levels will go up, primarily due to development within the watershed, typically in communities that are withdrawing from groundwater, and that that water will then pass into the Fox River. If you think about, you know, what sources currently within the Village of, of Montgomery, meaning groundwater in the Fox River, I think we can conclude that the Fox River is the most sustainable supply currently within the region. Now, being that the Fox River does have periods of time where there's low flow and can get below the, what's called the Q710 level, a backup supply would be needed, and therefore, in that alternative, we would continue to suggest that you would connect your wells to a Fox River treatment system to have them if you need them. The goal being that you wouldn't have to use them very often, but they're there as a backup. The graphs, graph and table to the right show how your risk of low flow goes down, or of being below low flow goes down in the future because water levels are generally going up. And the graph in the upper right shows those water levels generally going up through the area. Because of the fact that when a permit is issued for the Fox River, they will set that low flow level, it's better to probably do that now statistically, so that as water levels go up into the future, then you'd be able to take advantage of more periods of time where you'd be able to withdraw from the river. The last source of supply that currently isn't in the region, meaning the Montgomery, Oswego, Yorkville region, or Village of Montgomery proper, but could be, based on the alternatives that we're going to talk about, is certainly Lake Michigan water. And in some cases, it's getting pretty close. The Lake Michigan diversion, meaning all water diverted out of Lake Michigan, including through the Chicago River, stormwater that normally would have gone into Lake Michigan, and potable water diversion is set at 3,200 CFS. The Supreme, it was Supreme Court ruling that established that level. The Illinois Department of Natural Resources is the state agency that manages the allocation for public water supplies that withdraw from the river, as well as any other allocation. And they've recently stated that they believe there's sufficient allocation to the Joliet region, which of course would also include Montgomery as part of potentially that connection, or certainly if it was through DuPage Water Commission or the Illinois American Lake Water, Illinois Lake Water System as well. So based on current projections, the Lake Michigan, you know, is something that you could connect to, and there, there should be sufficient capacity for that. You would have to go through an allocation process, though, where you petition Illinois Department of Natural Resources to receive that allocation. Okay, let's get into a couple of studies. As stated, the, the mission here is to build on this past information that's available. Update the information if we've already got it available, so we're not reinventing the wheel. Some of the other items do require some, you know, cost estimating separate from this, rather than just updates. Wanted to show you what, again, is available and what we're going to build on. So in 2016 was, you know, probably the, the first major study where we came in and talked about the overall water master plan and the different alternative supply sources. We looked a lot at the village's wells to determine sustainability and continue to build on that. We looked at the Fox River as an independent supply, and then also talked about the Fox River with all three communities, meaning Montgomery, Oswego, and Yorkville. The specifics of this study were to look at your population and water demand projections, and we established those back in 2016. Where five years later, those actually have changed a little bit, and we've already integrated that analysis into the Oswego study and would integrate it into future analysis for you. We also conducted that regulatory review, and like I said, the sustainable source water assessment. And those were the alternatives that we looked at, was continuing on the well network, if there was the potential to be able to continue forward for 20-plus years, as well as the Fox River alone, and then the Fox River with Oswego and Yorkville. Shortly after that master plan was completed, the DuPage Water Commission approached communities within the region, Montgomery being one of them, to see if the three villages would be, or, you know, one of them independently, two of them, or all three of you, would be interested in connecting to the DuPage Water Commission. Their consultant, AECOM, developed a couple different analysis and looked at the cost for extension of that system. In general, they identified the connecting point for the DuPage Water Commission loop. They have a large transmission loop around the county. For your connection would be at 75th and Book Road on the west side of Naperville, and then that main would traverse down to the Oswego, Yorkville, Montgomery area. You can see there's two connection points on this slide overall, which we'll get into actually a little bit later when we present this down, a few slides later. Okay, so now we went from 16, 17, 18 to current. The Village of Oswego last year initiated their alternative water source study to evaluate options for them specifically. They've approached staff from the Village of Montgomery to see if you would be interested in cost sharing as part of that study, because they are updating some of these regional alternatives or subregion alternatives, and you can have the benefit for getting that information as part of your overall update. In addition to approaching you, of course, they've approached Yorkville as well. And it's my understanding that staff is working on an analysis that they would bring forward to you for your consideration to share as part of that study as well. Inputs that they've asked for to be able to add into their study was, one, demand projections. And like I mentioned earlier, we've actually already went through that with your staff to identify the demand projections out to 2050, which ultimately actually would be your projected build-out population and demand projection. So we've provided that to the village, and then there's also been some work where the staff has been invited to comment on decision considerations, which ultimately could go into a decision matrix. We, as engineers, like to use fancy words like matrix, but basically a list of characteristics or considerations for you that I think will, will be helpful for you when you're ultimately ready to head towards making a decision. The outputs from this study that will be beneficial to the Village of Montgomery specifically, and they are doing some work that's specific to Oswego, and the plan would be not to pay for that because it's specific to. for that because it's specific to Oswego, but pay for the items that are for, that include you. The deep sandstone aquifer analysis, like I mentioned earlier, having the State Water Survey update information specific to this region, updated cost estimates for a couple of the alternatives, and I'll mention them as we go. And then they have hired a public engagement consultant and are going to be working on a campaign to develop items for engagement through social media and other type of efforts for this overall process. If you've been following the Joliet Project at all, it's actually the same consultant that's working with them. You can do educational items like water conservation, but also, you know, focus in on notifying the public of this overall process. Getting into the six supply options, first we'll go through the three that are the Lake Michigan options as we see them, and the Joliet Area Water Commission. Joliet has been evaluating alternative sources. It first started with 14 of them back in 2018, and throughout the time period, got it down to five, then two, and now has selected the city of Chicago, and is going down the path of preliminary engineering. They've reached, continued to reach out to yourself, as well as 10 other communities in the area to talk about that possibility. Staff has been engaged in that process, as have we, to be able to bring that alternative to you for your consideration. The DePage Water Commission, it continues to be an option. They continue to be interested as a water supplier to the Village of Montgomery and Yorkville and Oswego as well, so we'll talk about that. And then kind of a newer one for you anyway, this was something that we had evaluated for Yorkville back in 2016, 17, but there's the Illinois Lake Water Company, which currently provides water to some of the communities in the area, which we'll show you a map of that in a second, and potentially extending off of that system to be able to serve you. The Joliet Area Water Commission is, there's pretty much 11 communities that are still considering joining that, you being one, and then your neighbors, of course, Oswego and Yorkville being potential others, and then the other eight, including Joliet down in the generally Will County area. The city of Joliet ended up selecting, connecting to the city of Chicago at 84th and Kedvale, and bringing the water down. The different transmission routes are still under consideration as to where that would go, and then the commission network that would serve the area there, as well as coming over to Montgomery, is also under evaluation. One of the potential differentiating factors with this particular alternative is, if you get in now, you would be one of the charter members and presumably have representation that goes along with that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And it, these may be, if we do one of these options, it's always concerned me, anything coming out of Chicago, there's a corruption factor, whether it be DePage, whether it be Joliet, whether, and in this situation here, there are 11 communities that are considering joining, and if all, I'm assuming if all 11 joined, they'd all be charter members. One of the things I'm worried about as a village board member is that we, it's essentially taxation without representation. I want a representative from Montgomery there to look after our interests. If, if we're part of this Joliet Commission, and we're getting our water from Chicago, there's got to be a bigger commission in Chicago. At some point, do they just say, if we're running into some sort of supply issue, they just say, well, we're going to restrict the flow to the suburban communities because we need this amount of water? And, or also of saying, okay, there are fees and then tap-on fees and other hidden fees that we may not necessarily know about, that just keep getting added on as we keep going further and further out into the suburbs?
There are, so as part of the Joliet process with the city of Chicago, they have negotiated in agreement that would be either, you know, if there was no other communities that joined Joliet, it would be for them, or if it would be on behalf of the overall water commission. It's a long-term agreement, as much as 100-plus years, to be able to connect within that agreement. It defines things like how the water rate will be defined to any commission member. And through that process, they were able to negotiate that it's pretty straightforward as far as the cost of service. So that agreement, which the commission would be able to review on an annual basis, identifies that Chicago has to identify, how much does it cost them to pull water out of Lake Michigan, go through what's called their south water treatment plant, or the Eugene Sawyer Water Treatment Plant, and then they have a transmission system tunnel that takes the water out to the southwest Palm Station where the commission would connect. And then from there, the commission takes over essentially ownership of the water and transfers that down to the region. It's, it's different than the way their agreements had been set up with other previous water commissions. The agreements that have been set up with the previous water commissions was that the commission would pay the same rate as the city of Chicago resident. In this case, when you're only paying for the facilities that you're using, your rate could be cheaper to significantly cheaper than the city of Chicago's rate because you're buying it wholesale. So the agreement specifically says they can't include things like pensions, they can't include their lead service line replacement, they can't include their water main replacement.
But that, those were my next questions, where, okay, I'm city of Chicago, oh, it's costing us more to generate water as we're going through here. We've got to replace lead service lines, we've got to replace water main, oh, we have a budget deficit of $1 billion, we need to charge these communities more for water so we can pay for stuff that's not even associated with water.
And I, I see your concern for sure. Under the agreement language that has been approved, you know, preliminarily by the city of Chicago City Council, they have taken that all out of the equation. They say, they say within agreement that they specifically cannot do that, it's simply buying the water at the cost for them to be able to produce the water. They can't tack on those things with the agreement that will be established for the water commission.
They can't now, but they figure out ways to do it. I have very little faith in the city of Chicago.
I'm not going to argue on that. The one thing I would say is, the fact that Joliet was able to negotiate a deal like this that says ironclad is kind of a huge breakthrough in this area. This isn't something that DePage Water Commission's contract has in it, and this was, they had the exact same concern, I would imagine, that you're having. And so they were able to negotiate that. And keep in mind that Joliet was seriously considering, the last two alternatives was city of Chicago or Indiana, right? And so the city went for this hard. I mean, they wanted to sell the water to Joliet. So I hear your concern. I did want to mention, take a step back into the Joliet Water Commission. I have been participating on the mayor and managers' calls that they have every month or every other month. I voiced that as one of our concerns. If we, if this was to be our chosen route, that we would want representation on the water commission, so that, you know, that we can kind of oversee that operation as it goes. The only way we get there is making that, making a decision this year to join them, which I think we are in a good position to make a decision, whether we need to draw water, you know, next year, in 10 years, or 20 years, it's a different story. We wouldn't have, if I recall, we would not have any sort of voting rights, let's say, with DePage Water Commission.
It's my understanding they've offered up possibly one board member for the region.
Okay. So something to be considered in your decision matrix as we get down that far. One question I had, and it's not Joliet, is the Illinois Lake, is that a private company?
It is. Yeah, it's a private utility, which we have a slide on that. If you want me to address it then, or do you want me to?
No, no, then, then for sure. Go ahead.
And my apologies, I realize I'm going to go more than 20, 25 minutes, so.
Oh, go ahead.
That's what I do, Jeff.
Okay.
I can agree with Steve though. I'm worried because we're the farthest north. Everybody else is south. And we're going to be the littlest. Joliet will end up being the second biggest city in the state of Illinois. They, they went all around Plainfield. Who is Plainfield with on their water?
They're with the Illinois Lake Water Company, the one that we're gonna, I'm going to show you on the very next slide that comes out from Bedford Park, and then it serves Bowling Brook, Plainfield, and Homer Glen, and then small portions of Lamont and Romeoville.
I'm not overly concerned, so the three communities, Oswego, Montgomery, and Yorkville, would create a pretty decent voting block on the commission.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, it's a point where it's.
Plainfield has got Joliet right up to their borders all around them. They just, they didn't reach out to the industry, and Joliet didn't care how far they went. And can you find for us later, how much, because this, this was about 15 years ago when I went down to Springfield with the group, the big discussion down there was DePage Water. And could you find out later how much Naperville paid for their water back then, and how much they're paying now, 15 years later? I'm sure they got a deal like we're going to get in the beginning, but 15 years later, how much hires are going to be?
Oh, from Chicago? They didn't have the same deal, but I see.
Well, I mean, they had a big water, I mean, that was the biggest discussion down there, was to DePage.
Yeah.
Especially with, what politician was going to be on the, on the board? There was a big fight down there at that time, so, just so I could kind of get the idea of how much it's going to go up in 15 years.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so the DePage Water Commission created and installed in the 80s. Throughout DePage County, there was 23 charter communities when it was first started, and then from that period of time to now, there's been six communities that have since connected to them, the latest community being the Village of Bartlett. They currently have a 40-year water supply contract with the city of Chicago that ends in 2024, and then all of the commission members contract with the commission, so each one of the municipalities, their contracts align to that same timeframe. So while 2024 seems like a little bit out there, it's my understanding they're currently under discussions with Chicago and negotiations for extending that contract out in time. Right now, the board for the DePage Water Commission is set up by state statute, and there's six municipal representatives, and then seven county representatives with the chair identifying each of those. So 13 in total that make up the Water Commission Board. The six municipal representatives are broken down into the county districts throughout DePage County, so them, again, coming down into a separate county could create the opportunity for opening up additional representation on the municipality, on the board, therefore something that, you know, if this is an alternative that you want to go further down the road, it's something certainly to explore, if that's important to you, as it sounds like it is. Okay, then here's that third, Lake Michigan Supply System, the Illinois Lake Water Company, which basically is run by Illinois American. And then that gets out to Plainfield, whether or not you would have to connect to a main transmission main as it works its way back to Bedford Park, as identified on that exhibit, or if there's some capacity down in the Plainfield area. It's my understanding that Plainfield is looking at the need to expand capacity of that system to meet their demands. So if, for instance, the Village of Montgomery and possibly your neighbors were to join on now, you would kind of be joining on with Plainfield potentially to expand that overall system, not only serve them long-term, but you as well. The other communities, like I had mentioned, that it serves are Bowling Brook, Homer Glen, and small portions of Romeoville and Lamont. And that water that gets to Bedford Park is from the city of Chicago as well. In fact, it's from the same water treatment plant in Chicago that you would get from Joliet, which is the Eugene Sawyer Water Treatment Plant. If you did not know this, there's two water treatment plants for the city of Chicago, the Eugene Sawyer Plant, which is on this exhibit, is identified as the Chicago South Plant, and then the Jardine Plant, which is right next to Navy Pier.
How big is the Jardine Plant, Jeff?
It is the largest plant in the world.
Isn't that awesome?
And I was there.
Me too. So, and you know, you guys will have to weigh this, but buying water from a private utility can be different than a public utility. The rates will likely be different, a different setup overall, and it will be something that we'll bring back and show you the differences so that you can evaluate if that's the best fit for the Village of Montgomery.
So I want to ask you questions on that, but I feel like it's probably best to see the results first before I start hedging any sort of bets on it.
Probably a good idea, Mayor Browley, just so that we can bring all the information together.
That's what I'm thinking.
The three alternatives for the Fox River, two of which you've already evaluated as part of your master planning effort in 2016 and 17, meaning the Village of Montgomery on your own, as well as with your neighbors, Oswego and Yorkville. A new alternative that has come forward within the last few months is the city of Aurora has stated that they have excess capacity at their Fox River Treatment Plant and within their system. They've not only approached you, but some of your neighbors to, that are, let's just say, surrounding Aurora, to see if there's any interest in connecting to the Aurora system. So we think that this is a good time, if you want to evaluate them as a water supplier, to evaluate them along with the other alternatives.
Ultimately, right now Aurora gets all, they've, they've chosen the Fox River as their primary source?
The city of Aurora has the Fox River as their primary source. On the slide when we get there, it will show you that they use about 60% to 70% Fox River as their source water, and then the remaining 30% to 40% is groundwater. It's a mix of shallow groundwater and deep groundwater. The same aquifer that you're pulling from is part of their supply portfolio.
Okay, thank you.
The Village of Montgomery has three water treatment plants, one of which is the lime softening water treatment plant. Mr. Guyer, of course, is very familiar with it, having operated it. That lime softening plant is the, is the only plant essentially that could be converted to treat Fox River. Four of the three that you have, the other two ion exchange would not be capable of treating Fox River water. Again, as part of the 1617 master plan, we evaluated expanding that plant, setting it up to treat Fox River water, as well as potentially wells that would come to it, and seeing what the costs would be. We would take the information from that previous work, update those costs, because now we're five, six years later, to be able to compare that alternative to the other alternatives. Very similarly would be, you know, taking a Fox River Treatment System, not only for the Village of Montgomery, but for all three communities. The previous analysis had suggested trying to locate that water treatment plant central to Montgomery, Oswego, and Yorkville. Generally, it identified the Orchard Road Corridor as being the geographic center of that. Once the water is treated from the Fox River, and then having wells as backup supply connected to the water treatment plant, the treated water would be transmitted to each one of the three communities so that it can be integrated into your system. We, again, this was already analyzed previously. The Oswego Study is actually updating all of these costs, and therefore, the plan would be to use the cost information here to compare apples to apples to the other alternatives. And what I should have said as part of the Lake Michigan System is, the Village of Oswego Study is also updating the cost to connect to the Joliet System, which would use that information, again, not reinvent the wheel, as well as the connection to DePage Water Commission and the Illinois American System. This one is, is new, so if, again, you deem that you would like to connect to the, like to evaluate connecting to the city of Aurora, we would need to come up with cost estimates. We've already had a meeting with their staff to talk about it. We've developed a draft questionnaire that we would submit to the city and engage in further discussions. They have one single lime softening plant located just south of Indian Trail on Route 25, near the Fox River, and like I'd said earlier, they have extra capacity that they're looking to potentially provide, be able to provide supply to you, or potentially some of the other neighbors around Aurora. The considerations that we see that you might want to throw into the mix, the matrix, to determine, you know, help you determine which one makes sense, some of these might be weighted differently. you know, help you determine which one makes sense, some of these might be weighted differently. Cost may be something that's very important to some, but there might be some other components here that are more important to others. Uh, risk of implementation is something that should be considered. Uh, water quality, if you see a difference in water quality between Lake Michigan and, uh, Fox River Treated System, then that's something you would, you would probably want to weigh in. Uh, the management of the system and staffing required, uh, connecting to a Lake Michigan System has a certain level of staffing. Uh, putting in your own Fox River Treatment System would have a different level of staffing to go with it. The level of control and governance, if you're part of the board, if you're not part of the board, if you're more of a customer, if you're buying from a private utility, if it's you and, and two other neighbors, you by yourself, you know, big differences there. And then you would have to determine how that fits in. And then sustainability and quantity, we've identified that actually all these sources at this point would, could be considered sustainable. But you may have a different thought as to whether a Lake Michigan System has a different level of sustainability over the Fox River. Just wanna hit costs a little bit, because I think it's really important for this situation that when we're comparing apples to apples, we can't simply just take the capital cost. Because some of these alternatives might have a higher capital cost, but lower operation, maintenance, or replacement cost, or lower purchased water cost. We really need to take them all together to compare them all together. The first main component will be your supply and treatment costs. Obviously, you know, any of these alternatives, you would no longer need your treatment systems unless, of course, you're expanding your Fox River System. But within the supply and treatment components, there may be buying or connection fee cost. Uh, DuPage Water Commission, for instance, has suggested that there would be a buy-in and connection fee, uh, whereas the other alternatives, it does not appear will be the case. There'll be the capital cost to be able to extend the system to you or build infrastructure to be able to operate the system. Uh, if in some cases, you know, you're going to the Lake Michigan System, for instance, you have to purchase that water from the City of Chicago or the, or the intermediate supplier, uh, there. If you go into the Fox River, you don't actually have to pay to pull water from the Fox River. So that could be a differentiation or will be a differentiation when entered into the cost. And then what would be the operation, maintenance, and replacement? Again, connecting to a Lake Michigan System likely would be lower from an OMNR, uh, perspective than operating your own water treatment plant. After you consider the supply and treatment costs, though, there's the other component, which is the storage, distribution, and control. So once that finished water gets into your system, you still have your elevated tanks that you need to take care of, your ground storage tanks, your pumping stations, all your water mains, uh, throughout town, uh, and then the control network to be able to tie that all together. There's capital investment that will be required. Uh, with this new system, the water will be likely coming into one or possibly two locations, whereas now you have three. So it could require some adjustments to your distribution system overall. And the capital cost for that will have to be entered in, as well as the operation, maintenance, or replacement costs for the change in system. So how do we make or try to get to an apples-to-apples comparison to be able to provide the most cost-effective alternative? Well, one method is to identify what the typical residential bill would be, selecting twenty thirty, uh, trying to get again an apples-to-apples comparison. Joliet has identified that twenty thirty is when they would like the commission members to connect. It could be quicker with some of the other alternatives and, and it could ob- obviously be longer, uh, overall in the system too. But we need to select a timeframe for the same year when we're comparing all of them together. Uh, we would suggest then what your typical residential bill would be. You'd be able to use that to identify how it compares to the current bill as well. And then the fifty-year cost of ownership in some of these systems, it might be possible that over thirty to forty years, when you're paying off debt service for the capital cost, you know, the overall cost is a little bit higher. But after you've bought that system, then the cost could go down, uh, because you're only focusing on rehab or replacement. So for those systems where, you know, you're building the infrastructure new and maybe don't have a dependence on somebody else, it, it's wise typically to look at a fifty-year cost of ownership to see how that plays out. That there, and we're getting very close, only two more slides, this one being the main one, last being Q and A. Getting into the schedule, so here's the suggested schedule for you. Uh, if you agree that it makes sense based on tonight's presentation and, and these six alternatives, or you wanna modify that, we'd bring a contract forward for your consideration on April twelfth. Uh, in addition, like I said, staff was working with Oswego to talk about a cost-sharing agreement with Oswego Studies so that we can get information out of that and use it in your analysis. The Joliet System is working through, you know, some additional refinement on the cost, and they won't have that ready until midsummer, so probably July to August. Meanwhile, we'll be doing cost estimating for the other alternatives, like the Aurora Connection, for instance, so that we can all bring those together in late summer. Uh, basically, having the full cost analysis completed for you by September of this year would be the overall plan. And then we would be back to present in October. To much excitement, I'm sure, uh, so that we can bring all this together with that apples-to-apples comparison. And then if you feel like you have sufficient information, the thought would be trying to make a decision on the path forward by the end of the year. Uh, this aligns well with the Joliet System, hoping to have a decision by the end of the year, our first part of twenty twenty-two. And then certainly any of the other alternatives, uh, it would fit into the overall schedule too. So with that, we move on to additional Q and A or any comments.
If all the villages go with Joliet Water, our groundwater, we won't be using so much. That should go up. Do we have to take so many gallons, or can we just keep taking it regularly and just use that? Cause the main cost is gonna be in the piping and everything. And then later on, increase more and more and still get the water cheaper out of our ground?
But before you answer, and I'm gonna tag on to his question. It's kinda like the salt contract. Are we required to take a minimum, or are we capped out at a maximum? Can, if we continue to expand, can we continue to get more water at the same cost?
So, um, first comment is using different sources of water can be a concern within your system. And there are some examples of that that have shown that you have to be extremely careful with that. I'm not saying that it's impossible, but it would require a lot of study to use well water and Lake Michigan water, uh, within your system. Uh, the IEPA would require, again, a lot of studies, because there's been some places where, for instance, lead has leached into the system. Now, you guys replaced all your lead service lines, so that might be good, but you might still have some copper with lead solder, uh, which there's been another community in Northeast Illinois when, um, a change in source. So that would have to be heavily considered. From the Joliet Contract perspective, the commission is still under development. So some of those items haven't been fully defined as far as minimum take or even maximum. There currently is discussion about maximum, uh, withdrawal, uh, to limit your peak flow or withdrawal. And honestly, that's occurring right now, uh, within the commission, so that would be something to consider. You would be limited for your withdrawal based on Lake Michigan allocation. So you work through the process to identify what your allocation would be. Uh, one of the good things about Montgomery that a lot of the community, other communities don't necessarily have, is you have a pretty defined study area and with that, a pretty, or I would say, an easier way to define what your ultimate water demand would be. Whereas a lot of these communities are identifying what their twenty-fifty demand would be, but they know that they're gonna grow beyond that. And therefore, they have to kinda consider from a capacity perspective what makes sense. Uh, Trustee Lee, you had mentioned, you know, the cost for the pipes, that by far is the most expensive part. And if you're bringing that to the community, um, and have made that capital investment, uh, that's a benefit. You know, the water, the cost of getting water out of the Joliet System or DuPage Water Commission System versus well water could and most likely would be higher, but again, you have to work through the challenges of water quality. If you go to the DuPage System, for sure, you would not be able to use well water. That's written into the agreement. And likely within the Joliet Agreement, I would have to guess that they'll end up writing that in as well. Um, that, you know, if you're connected to the commission, you're gonna use that as your primary source.
But we're definitely gonna be the smallest, cause all those other villages, Oswego's bigger than us now. Yorkville's about the same, but they got a lot of growth. Uh, Plainfield, well, shouldn't they say Plainfield? Joliet is so far around there, that, like I said, they're gonna be huge. And I just don't want us being at the bottom of the rung saying, you gotta use this much, and we go, hey, there's no room for expansion. What do you mean? We ain't gonna use that much. And I also heard, I think this was maybe the presentation you made to Oswego, that probably your cost for water will go up three times to a resident.
To be, uh, calculated, um, Joliet's, that's what the projection is for Joliet, that their water bills will, um, be as much as three times, you know, that's based on current cost estimates. When we come back and we show you in October, we'll show you for each one of the alternatives, that typical residential water bill in twenty thirty, so you can see what the number looks like for Montgomery specifically.
That's one of the things, we're cheap now on water compared to some. And three times more, if you gotta have it, you gotta have it, but, uh.
No matter where we go, whether it be with DuPage, Joliet, the private water company, all of that's coming from Lake Michigan. Essentially, the same pipe, it's just getting routed differently on how it gets here, correct?
Um, somewhat, so it's coming from the, the same water treatment plant.
So, okay.
Eugene Sawyer, and then, you know, I believe, well, actually, that's not true. Uh, DuPage Water Commission's water comes from Jardine out to their pump station on the west side of the city. Uh, so the, the northern treatment plant in Chicago. The Joliet System and the Illinois Lake Water come from Eugene Sawyer, the South Plant. And then that transmission corridor coming out. Uh, the Illinois Lake Water System, again, connects to Bedford Park. So Bedford Park connects to Chicago somewhere, whereas Joliet will be connecting right at one of Chicago's pump stations and bringing that down. So there's certainly consistency to that point. Then the pipe coming, you know, out of Bedford Park is its own separate pipe. The pipe that will come down to the Joliet areas, it's all separate.
I have two questions. One is you talked about comparing the residential rate. What about the commercial rate? What's the disparity between our commercial rate and our residential rates?
Uh, my understanding, it's the same from a volumetric charge. So you have X dollars per thousand gallons, you know, the different commercial entities obviously use.
Use different rates.
Much different.
But the rate's the same.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for us, for the residential, it's kinda like most houses use about the same amount of water, uh, in general, if you have the same family size, so that we can then show that basis.
And you had mentioned about the, you know, we don't have any lead service lines here, thank goodness, and then, but the lead solder. And if you switch the water system, it could become a problem. Well, regardless, if we switch, we're gonna have that problem, regardless of which choice we pick.
It's something to analyze. It's a challenge that we will overcome, uh, overall. And it, my point was, is it could be more complex if you're, if you're using different types of water in the system at the same.
And that's my other question is, so once you make this commitment, whichever one of these pyramids that we jump on, we really don't have the, what's our backup plan? So if, if the pipe bursts on that water coming out here, what's Plan B?
Plan B typically is to have backup wells, um, that you would maintain, you know, to be able to pump into the system on a very short-term basis, uh, if needed. Uh, because with these systems, yes, uh, actually, all of them are, are really at this point only contemplating one pipe, uh, to this region. So that the backup supply would be wells. Uh, the thought being that each one of those systems could be repaired in, in a fairly short duration. So it'd be a fairly short duration that you would have to use the backup supply in the system. Uh, you would take precautions like, you know, adding phosphates to the system to protect against, uh, any challenges with, you know, lead solder being released, but something to definitely consider, and it's a very good point.
Yeah, that's, I mean, what's the catastrophic end of this?
Yes.
When you make a switch like this, because now we have the lime softening and we have the reverse osmosis, so we have both options. We have some flexibility in our system, right? We can pump water from the east side of town to the west side and the west side to the east side. Well, we don't have an option.
Yeah, uh, yes, and many, many, um, I would say, most Lake Michigan Systems do have wells as backup. Uh, so you would, we would suggest that you have that for yours as well.
And would you, and, and again, I don't need to dig down into the weeds on this, but do you need to exercise that equipment then? And, or, you know, like generators, you have to run those every month.
Yes.
Do you have to run those wells? And then we run into, are we just running them and dumping the water, because introducing it into the system is a problem?
Yes, so the IEPA, if you're gonna keep it active as emergency backup, they'll still require you to test it on a monthly basis. Uh, and typically, what communities will do is they'll basically run it through a fire hydrant. They will not put that into the water distribution system and they'll pump that to waste so that they can confirm that the well is operable, but also be able to take the samples so that they can meet the IEPA requirements.
Do we maintain, if we go to a, a different system, the wells that we have now, do we continue to maintain those and just keep that system essentially monthly operational, just in case?
The wells, yes, the treatment system, uh, we would recommend against. Uh, it's very difficult for those treatment systems to be able to sit idle for, you know, thirty days at a time and then try to fire them up, uh, to be able to provide treated water. And then the maintenance required for that, for the limited amount of times that you would ever need to use them, uh, that we would not recommend keeping those treatment systems in place. Again, you would have the wells, you'd have the chlorine, uh, to be able to meet that, the fluoride you would set up, and then a phosphate to be able to pump that water into your system if needed.
Just so we don't end up with a Flint, Michigan, or a Dallas problem, and where there's no backup plan in Flint, Michigan, it was.
I have a question. Um, I'm not sure if this is for Jeff Freeman or actually for Mark Wolf. Uh, let's see, the, with the Fox River options, if we were to go it alone, you mentioned that we would need to expand our lime softening, uh, water treatment plant. We are, uh, basically moving forward on a new Public Works Building. So how, how does that affect our plan with our Public Works Building? And then if we have to expand, uh, the lime treatment plant? I, I guess I, I'm, I'm concerned if this is a viable option for us, where we would have to expand that plant. Shouldn't we be, uh, either a, a, a strong yes or no on this option before we start moving forward with our new Public Works Building?
So to answer your question, Trustee Sberling, uh, the answer would be no. The effects that expansion of the current lime softening plant wouldn't affect the new Public Works Facility in the same regard that it really doesn't affect it at this point, because, um, we're going to continue to leave that plant operational. Depending on what we do long-term, um, we'll have a, a key factor in that in the opposite direction, meaning that we have to account for the amount of staff that we anticipate in the new building, making the assumption that the lime softening plant a hundred percent goes away. It's kind of the reverse effect, whereas if we expand the lime softening plant, we currently have a staff level of twenty in that facility today. So we know that it can support, which in, in an expansion, you know, let's just use a number for a quick reference, uh, of six additional or eight additional staff. You add that to the three that are currently there, we're still under that current threshold of twenty. So again, not to mention that we're gonna expand the plant and there could be amenities added to that current facility. So I guess to answer your question is it doesn't play as much a factor into, uh, the new Public Works Building as it would do, is, as it would in regards to what would go into the expansion portion of the lime softening plant. The operations, as far as the distribution system, uh, such as maintenance workers, are still gonna take place out of the new facility, whereas the water treatment operators, uh, staff would still, um, report to the lime softening plant. Does that, does that make sense?
No, I'm still, I'm still a little bit confused. Um, I, I just, I, I'm not getting, I, I feel like we're moving forward with our Public Works Building. But then would we still have, number one, the room to expand our lime, the lime treatment plant that we could potentially need? And then also the opposite. And then also the opposite, if we say...
So to answer your question, yes. The current, so the footprint of the entire site would allow for expansion of the lime softening plant with the current design for the new public works building. So one of the things we consider is we do have a current layout for additional lagoons, for the backwash lagoons, so that was taken into account when we put in for the new site plan for the new building, to make sure that we maintain that if this was a viable option. That's, that's what we assumed moving forward. So to answer your question, there would be the capacity to add on to the lime softening plant, add the lagoons and all the different amenities that would go with that and support that.
Okay. Thank, yes, that was helpful. I wanted to make sure that we had taken this into consideration with the design of the new public works building. Thank you. You did answer my question, Mark. I appreciate it.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? I just wanted to make a comment. I know Jeff mentioned this, that, you know, Yorkville or Oswego is working on kind of a, their final study, if you will. You know, I talked with the mayors and the managers of those towns to seek to use some of that data. And so at the next meeting, we'll be submitting for the board a cost-sharing agreement, IGA with them, so we can not only get the information, but also partake and help pay for the information that they're getting. Alongside that, a PSA with EEI to basically true everything up so it's apples-to-apples and we can actually make a decision. Because now we have several options, some we haven't studied in detail, some they're old, some, you know, Joliet's much more refined. So that'll, we'll be bringing that at a future meeting, I think April 12th, you said.
So are we going to pursue the Aurora option? Are you looking into that, too? Because that, that kind of interests me, and that'd be part of the study. Because Aurora, their chlorination, correct? They're not break point?
Correct.
So the potential exists that we could just take the water from them as is and we won't have to rechlorinate it. We would have to, other than the far east side, I don't know if we would have to, to do any booster pumping with it because they may be able to fill our towers with their pressure without us having to do some additional pumping, other than Ogden Hill, perhaps. The only thing that, that concerns me of the Lake Michigan, and they've been studying this for years, is with the increase in temperatures, the thermal stratification and turnover is changing, and they're predicting it's going to affect the ecosystem, the Lake Michigan water. And if that's the case, then there's got to be an increase in costs to treat that water because of the changes of the water quality in the lake. The thing I've always liked about Aurora is they blend, and so they, they have the ability, if, if the water in the river is not to their specifications, they just reduce river water and increase well water. And then, a lot of it's with algae bloom, right? So then, when that time of period passes, then they revert back to more river water and less well water. So they have the ability to change their source water to keep their costs low for treatment. So, yeah, I would be interested to see with, with the Aurora. And, and they're closer. I mean, you know, we, we almost touch Aurora in several places, so, you know, so the cost to push the water to us may be a lot less than paying for that longer transmission line.
There are definitely some huge advantages to that, to that one. I mean, to some of these other ones, we can, I'm sure we'll have a lengthy one, two, or three board meetings to talk about, maybe not to dissect the data when we have it later this year, but to weigh our preferences and what's important to each person, you know, on the board, what's important to the community long term. That decision matrix kind of thing will be ultimately our decision as the board to kind of vet that. And so conversations like that are helpful, and we're going to probably have a lot of those throughout this year.
And it'll be interesting to see, I've, I've never looked into it, but Aurora's finished water chemistry is as far as, you know, pH, alkalinity, stuff like that, just to see how close it is to what we're doing now. So if we, because when we change, we may have a, you know, a shock to the system because of the different water chemistry.
That will be a mandatory study that will have to be done as a water transfer plan to evaluate what the effects are and if any water quality changes need to occur for your particular system. The IEPA has specific requirements for that type of study.
All right. Any other questions? Jeff, thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you still plan on banking time for next time?
Yeah, then that would mean I'm going to be here for like two hours next time, so...
That's right. It's a worthy topic, so thank you. I appreciate it.
It's a great topic. I'm passionate about it. Oh, thank you. I am.
All right. With that, I will move on. Is there anything newer unfinished?
I have something.
Dan?
So we received the new banners, and Public Works has been actively installing those, and they've been installing them out west. I don't know how many people have seen them, but they really look good. We've received a lot of positive feedback from the community, so just want to thank Public Works for jumping on that. And it seems like every, every week I see more and more going up. They have some on Liquid Creek Drive now and further down Concord towards Galena, so they're making progress on getting those installed.
Four or five residents have commented to me, and they all love them.
That's good.
Yeah, I like them. All right. Anything else?
Stephen and I are not wearing our Ohio State and Wisconsin shirts tonight, but you don't have to worry about that.
All right. Future meetings, Plank Commission meeting, April 1st. Will we have that meeting scheduled? No, likely canceled. Next village board meeting, Monday, April 12th, in this room at 7:00 PM. With that, we already have executive session.
I was hoping you were going to say no, that you forgot the reports or something.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. We will be returning to discuss the minutes of meetings pursuant to state statute. I will say that we will be returning for action afterwards, and I believe we're going to ask all of you to go outside. Is that all right? Because we're going to have that meeting right here, as much as I like all of you. There you go.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
All right, that carries 5-0. I was going to tell Teresa we won't start without her, but there you are. All right, we're still recording? Hi, Teresa.
Hi. I don't think you are recording.
Dale's recording, but...
No.
Hit cancel.
No, you're recording.
All right. All right, sounds great. So I'll call the meeting back to order and go into items for separate action. We have the report on closed minutes and ask our attorney for a summary.
Yes, and per our discussion in executive session, at this time, we would recommend a motion for the release of the executive session minutes from September 14th, 2020, which was regarding to the last six-month review of executive session minutes. So a motion to that effect.
Second. Any discussion? All right, call it off.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. All right, with that, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yep. All right, and we're adjourned. Thank you.